We could probably start Bishop and Ellen will come along when she comes, but I think Lisa's gonna welcome us anyway.
Okay, all right then. Well, I'm going to, I don't have a lot to do except for to pray and to listen and to be here. And first of all, I'd want to, before I pray, thank everyone for getting up this morning. I'm sure you were up anyway, but thank you for being here this morning on this beautiful day. So let us pray. This is a prayer for the mission of the church. Almighty God, you sent your son, Jesus Christ, to reconcile the world to yourself. We praise and bless you for those whom you have sent in the power of this spirit to preach the gospel to all nations. We thank you that in all parts of the earth, a community of love has been gathered together by their prayers and labors, and that in every place your servants call upon your name. For the kingdom and the power and the glory are yours forever. Amen. And I just, before we get started, I want to just say a few things. For the last couple of years, if you've been at General Diocese and Convention, you've noticed that we've been having the passage from Matthew where Peter is in a storm and he steps out of a rocking tumultuous boat into the storm and goes closer to Jesus. And we might be done with that passage this convention, but anyhow. So you've heard me for the last couple of years as I've encouraged us to step out of the boat and to go closer to Jesus as we discern and live into our future as a diocese and as followers of Jesus. And then last summer, when I called together people from across the state to figure out what stepping out of the boat might look like for us in a practical way. Because it's not just a figurative thing, it's actually something that we can do. And so in a nutshell, I asked people from across the diocese to discern and plan a way for us to have a sustainable future where our diocese is able to have vibrant ministry in communities across the state. And the Thrive leaders have dedicated hundreds, I'd like to actually count it up at some point, hundreds of hours together on our behalf, creating a roadmap for an experiment that I believe will set us up for an impactful future as the Episcopal branch of the Jesus Movement in Vermont. And I'm so proud of the work that they've done and their dedication to the work that they presented to us in their report and that they will discuss with us over the next few town hall meetings. And I pray that we will join them in this experiment over the next three years because that's really what it is. And it's an experiment that will help us discern and make more plans. But I love the idea of an experiment because it's meant to help us learn and to figure things out. But anyhow, this experiment will require continued prayer and open hearts and courage as we learn and discern our way forward. So thank you again for being here this morning. Thank you again to all of the Thrive members for all of the work that you've done to help us get to this day.
I can, am I next on the agenda, Anne? I know that Ellen's not here. All right. Thank you, Bishop. I'm Lisa Ransom. For those of you that don't know who I am, I presently serve as the President of the Standing Committee. I've also participated as a member of the Thrive Task Force over this past year. So on behalf of the Standing Committee, I commend this year-long visioning process and the recommendations that come from this work. As we're all aware, the prevailing trend across the Episcopal Church and throughout virtually every denomination in this country, I think actually every denomination in this country is a sharp decrease in traditional church membership. And the research has shown that this decrease is connected to the perceived relevance of the church in local communities who struggle with worsening economic, social, and environmental realities and relevance in individual spiritual lives in this rapidly changing world. So as you've heard, to address this reality in Vermont, Bishop Shannon commissioned the Thrive Task Force over a year ago to consider new models of ministry and new collaborative relationships in our community. And as she just described beautifully, this creative and diverse task force of clergy and laypeople has strategized over the past 12 months to come up with some good recommendations for moving forward to strengthen our congregations to become more vital and connected in their communities. The recommendations that have come out of this process are reflected in a package of canon changes which will be presented to Diocese and Convention, allowing for a three-year trial basis to experiment and try out new ways of being church. And as Bishop Shannon just mentioned, new ways and experimenting are the only way that we can learn and become more resilient and adaptive. I believe this bold initiative to try on new ways and creative ways of responding to God's call to us in this time will make a difference for our longevity and our faithful response to God's dream for the Diocese of Vermont. Thank you all so much for taking time on this Saturday morning to listen to the journey of this task force. Please support these canons and please share with others in your community this important work for our future, a future that, in which we will thrive. So I will pass this along now. I think, is Ellen here?
She's not here yet.
I am so sorry, everybody.
There she is.
I, I won't tell you everything that happened this morning, but including having my watch stop. Whoever took over for me, was it you, Anne?
A little bit, just a tiny bit.
Thank you, thank you all so much. Lisa, have you spoken?
Yes.
And has the bishop spoken?
Yes, she has.
All right. Is, did Sarah Cowan make it?
I don't believe she's here this morning, but I think Lisa's speaking for her as well. For everyone that may not know, Sarah Cowan is the President of the Trustees and is standing with Lisa in presenting this report to everyone.
Thank you, thank you all. Anne, is it okay if I just ju- jump in and open up the discussion?
Please do.
The idea was that you've all read the report and you've come with your comments and questions. And we're just very happy to have the bishop and Thrive leaders here today to listen to you and to respond to you. And so I think what I'd like to do is, since there are a lot of people on the Zoom, which is wonderful, I'd love to follow Zoom protocol and have you use the raised hand function or just raise your hands. And I'll, I'll call on you and ask the person who has dealt with the comment or question the most on Thrive to respond. And if I don't see somebody's raised hand, Anne or Lisa or anyone, please just remind me and we'll get to everybody.
We will, we will have too many people for us to have on one screen at a time, however. So if, if you know how to use the raised hand function, you go to the bottom of your screen and it says reactions and there's a bar that you can click that says raise your hand.
Yeah.
That'll put you up at the top of the screen for everybody.
And I should also be able to see it on a function that I have on my computer if I keep scrolling. So again, with great thanks and joy, who would like to go first? I have someone called Zoom user with a hand up. And you'll need to unmute. Zoom user, can you hear me? All right, there you are. Do you have a comment or a question?
I may be Zoom, am I Zoom user?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I didn't see that on my screen, so I didn't know that you were referring to me, I'm sorry. I was, I also think that it was extremely, extremely, a lot of hard work that went into this. And I have just a question about the procedure, I guess, the process that went into this. I read that it involved communication with Vermont and New Hampshire and other dioceses. And I was just curious how the three interplayed in the formation of what we're doing. It will roll out across all three or just us? So I may be not the right question for the moment, but I was intrigued that this was a collaborative process.
Yep, that, that is a good question. I actually think our bishop is the best one to respond to that.
Sorry, I'm chewing a bit of a bagel here. So Maine and New Hampshire, when we began this process, their bishops and I have been talking about how we might collaborate. And so it sort of ran parallel to the work that Thrive was doing. There was a little bit of overlap. But it's not, what we'll be doing with Maine and New Hampshire is not quite the same thing as what Thrive has proposed. But as far as Maine and New Hampshire are concerned, we thought it was important, that was in May, I guess it was, that we announced that we would name each other assisting bishops. And part of that was to create an atmosphere where we would show to people that we're committed to collaborating in whatever ways we can. And so that might mean some of the committees that we've restructured, working with committees that are in Maine and New Hampshire. Also, there are ways that we can share clergy people and imagine doing ministry across the different dioceses. And there are some ways that we've already been doing that anyway. And, and, and province one. So it's not completely new, but we're going to be much more intentional about it because we know that that is where part of our future lies, is in collaboration.
Thank you, Bishop Shannon. William, did I see your hand up? No.
May I make a comment? This is Wally, that if someone addresses the group, they identify themselves. And this, I'm Wallace Good and I'm here representing the Rock Point Board primarily, listening mostly.
Thank you, Wally. That's a very good suggestion. Who is next? Please don't hesitate to raise your hand or speak up. Jenny? Hi Jenny. Can you unmute, please? Jenny, I see your hand up. Are you, do you have a comment or a question?
Jenny Anderson?
No, Jenny, is it Ogilby?
Yeah.
Do you have a comment or a question?
No, my, my hand's not up.
Okay, I see a little hand there, so that's why I called on you. All right, there we go. I know this is all with so many people, it's, it's, it's not the same as being in person. Stan?
I'm just going to take this opportunity in the relative silence, although silence is lovely, to let you know that I'm part of a fairly large group of people who are called the Pre-Convention Nominating Committee. And as you look at the changes in governance, which we'll talk more about later and in other town meetings, there are some positions that need to be filled. And one of the things we've done is to send a survey out to all clergy and senior wardens asking for suggestions. These are not the nominations themselves, but suggestions for people to fill those roles, particularly the roles on the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation, which is part of the Commission on Missional Vitality, and also the new Commission on Finance. So I will put in the chat the link to that survey if you haven't gotten it. And even if you're not clergy or senior warden, please feel free to fill it out and get it in by September 8th. So that the Pre-Convention Nominating Committee will have as many ideas from the diocese as possible because we're trying very hard to make these new posts geographically diverse within the diocese. And I just wanted to put a plug in for the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation. That's where I think the real missional juice is going to be. So if that's your passion and that's your skill, or you know somebody who, or who that is, their passion or skill, please let us know. And the Commission on Finance is also know, we want, we're looking for like parish treasurers who are like really super, or people with those skills. So I'm going to put that link in the chat in just a minute. So that's my plug. Thank you.
Thanks, Stan. We had a comment that people thought we were going to kind of lead, maybe lead them through the report or discuss the report as Thrive leaders. And so, yes, Michael? Austin? You need to unmute, please.
This is Mike Austin, St. Luke's, Fairhaven. Based on what the, our bishop has said, could she rank the, how, so it seems like Vermont is heading the list in terms of action and so forth. Could she rank the other two? Is it, and how far they are advanced?
Oh, you mean, are you talking about Maine and New Hampshire, Michael?
Yes.
So we've approached this discernment in a different way than they did. A part of it was, I would say, instigated by or propelled by an issue with financial sustainability and just getting a better hold on what our finances actually are. And so, and I will say that across the church, and especially since the pandemic, dioceses and congregations are hitting sort of the same wall and trying to figure out, okay, so what are we going to do to actually be the church? Because things have changed so much and things that have been neglected or are left for the future or not, you know, people not necessarily wanting to talk about them and face them. We don't really have a choice but to do so, at least I don't feel like we have any choice but to do something and to look into it and to be very transparent about everything. And so I can't really rank Maine and New Hampshire. I know that they don't have the same urgency that we did going into this. But I also felt like if we face this head-on and that it became an issue that everyone was aware of in the dioceses, that other leaders in the dioceses besides myself would be able to come up with some sort of a plan for what to do. And I also, you know, really believe that we could not just find a future that we're limping along, but one for flourishing. So that doesn't, I don't know if that exactly answers your question, but they're, they're looking at their longevity and their future as well, but I think in a different way.
Thank you, Bishop. I got from the chat, a chat comment that perhaps it would be helpful if some of the Thrive leaders described the highlights of the sections of the report. Could you, could you all just give me a wave or a thumbs up or something if that would be helpful for this discussion? Thank you, Sherry, Linda. Okay, great. Greta, may I call on you first to talk about the financial group?
Sure, thank you, Ellen. I'm Greta, I'm the Dean of the Cathedral and I was Chair of the subgroup that worked on financial sustainability. Several things came out of our work together. One of which is that we do have a bit of a financial concern moving forward. As you had heard earlier last year from the bishop describing what was described at that point as a financial cliff. In a lot of the work that we've done, it's more of a steep hill to climb than a cliff to fall over. So we've begun the work of climbing that hill. One of the big pieces was changing the way, changing some of the software within the diocese and offices to be more efficient in terms of the financial work that is done. Another is to take careful stock of what the staffing needs are in the office. That's an ongoing process. A third was to look at the current endowments and funds that have been used to sustain both the operating budget and some of the mission work and grants and loans and those kinds of things. And we realized that with our current usage of some of those funds, there was the possibility of, of moving perhaps a million dollars out of restricted funds into an unrestricted new fund that can assist with the operations of the diocese. That work has not been done yet. That's part of what we'll be looking at over the next six months. And the final big piece, well, two big, two other big pieces. The first being the establishment of a finance commission. We have not had, at least in my time and in relative recent memory of other people, a robust finance committee or finance commission that really oversees the entire financial picture of the diocese, including all of the entities which are the sole responsibility of the diocese. And so what we're asking in October is that we create a finance commission that will have oversight of not just helping, putting together the budget, but also receiving financial reports and interpreting them to the Standing Committee and the bishop for their use. Within the establishment of that finance committee, as you'll see when Stan talks about governance, the finance committee will be working with all of the entities that we envision in this new governance structure, the Standing Committee, the Board of Trustees, the diocese and entities, and the newly forming Commission on Missional Vitality. I believe that covers that and we're hopeful for improved communication, transparency in communication, transparency in our financial picture, and a clear understanding of, of the vastness and fullness of who we are as the Diocese of Vermont, which is more than just our collective churches and our collective clergy, but includes a lot more than that. So we're anticipating moving forward in hope and transparency with our financial picture. And I will leave it at that, I think.
Thank you so much for that excellent summary. And perhaps now people would like to make comments or questions just on the financial recommendations.
Ellen, I just wanted to clarify that, because I did, you know, realizing that there's been a couple of questions about what happens with New Hampshire and Maine.
Yes.
That this is, you know, that we, whatever may or may not happen with New Hampshire and Maine, we have to have our own house in good order. And so, you know, what we do, I mean, is not dependent on what they do. But we don't want to decide that we're going to not have any contact with them or just explore with them until after we figure it out. You know, those things can be working, you know, sort of messily together. But, you know, our work and our dioceses really is my priority. And that whatever we do with the work that Thrive has put together for us, it's, it doesn't have to, does it not involve Maine and New Hampshire?
There's a question about the price of the Standing Committee in the chat.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think Stan will address this in governance, but just to say, yes, it will increase a little bit to allow for better transparency and communication.
Yeah, I was, thank you, Greta. I was just going to say to Lee that Stan will elaborate on the structure when we get to that section. Maybe it would be helpful to pull back a little bit and remind people that the Thrive Task Force of 18 people divided into three groups. And there was financial sustainability, missional vitality, and governance and collaboration. We originally thought we would be talking more about collaboration with New Hampshire and Maine. And then we realized that was proceeding kind of under its own timetable and process with the leadership of the bishops. And as the bishop said so well just now, what we really needed to do is get our own house in order. And so to follow up on the financial recommendations, are there any comments or questions about what you read or heard from Greta? Yes, Natalie or Wallace?
Wally? So I'm one of the former treasures of the diocese. And we were hitting this hill while I was treasurer and I realized that the ship wasn't turning at all. And so part of the reason I resigned as treasurer is that no one was willing to tackle what's being attempted here. So I do appreciate the fact that it's trying to be tackled finally. That's the first. And I'm at the service of the finance group and I'm at the service of the group that wants to figure out the, the ownership of various funds that are under the trustees. Because I did heavy use, I heavily involved myself in both those situations and issues. That's that. On the finance piece also, under discussion at the time I was treasurer was, should we share some staff with these three dioceses among ourselves, which would reduce total staffing and also spread the expenses of staff over. And so in a sense, you can't really completely separate yourself from the triumphant of the three dioceses if you want to use a model in which you share staff and be able to come up with an independent staffing plan that doesn't involve the other two.
Can I say?
Yes, please.
So, yes, Wally, you are absolutely right, but I also knew that we could not enter into that with them, a conversation about staff sharing until we had a sense of our direction. And so, you know, if we adopt this, you know, this three-year experiment, I do think that we will be able to, you know, take advantage of things like that, sharing staff. And actually, because we can't help ourselves, we have been having those sorts of conversations, but I know that we couldn't commit until we know, or at least have a plan for ourselves for the future. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you. And Wally, we all deeply appreciate the dive that you took into the endowment funds and all the work that went into that. And Greta and her group were able to base some of their work on your work. And Greta, did you have any responses to Wally's comments?
I, two things. One, to reiterate what Ellen just said, thank you for the work you did. We poured through that Excel spreadsheet with magnifying glasses because it was small and long and it was very helpful, so thank you for that. And I note that you said service, so serve is in that word. So I'm hoping, Wally, that you will put your name forward to serve on the new Commission on Finance, at least for the first year or so. I think your knowledge is invaluable. So, yeah, so I want to encourage you to do that. Thank you. And even if you don't, we will call on you anyway.
Thank you. I have Earl Cooper-Camp and then Paul Horn. Earl?
Yes, thank you. I noticed under the Financial Stability on page nine, I think it is, the last bullet point is bullet point is planning an endowment campaign of two to three million to increase annual revenues to the diocese. I think that's, first of all, very commendable. Second of all, I realize it's probably the last bullet because there's probably the least amount of thought that's gone into that yet, because I know it's early and, you know, it'd be hard to, hard to do any sort of feasibility or looking like that. We did do, of course, a wonderful capital campaign around Rock Point that concluded like four or five years ago, I'm always bad on timing, that our wonderful sister Ellen did incredible, incredible work along with a great team to complete that. I think it's a really good thing. I would actually, and I assume that's something the finance commission will start looking at. I'd actually like to see that sort of raised in the order of the bullet points, just as more of a priority, because I think that is something, you know, really important to do. So has there been any, yeah, I know this is all very draft and sort of outlining and looking at hopes and aspirations for the future. Has there been any more thought than just putting the bullet point in there, though?
Thank you, Earl. Greta?
From, from the work we did in Thrive, the short answer is no. The longer answer is that as we looked at the reality of the budgeting and the reality of the money is available, we realized that if this diocese were to achieve financial independence in its stability as a standalone diocese, that that's what the need would be, would be about two to three million dollars in an endowment. And so that's why that bullet point is there. Things may shift when we have, after we get our house in order and we continue to have conversations with Maine and New Hampshire. So that's sort of where that stands. So, no and yes.
And thanks, that's helpful. And I realize it's early, early in the process, but I'm glad it's there. Like I said, I just think maybe pull it up a little bit because it should be more of a priority.
Thanks for the encouragement, Earl. Paul?
Thank you. So I'm Paul Horn, I'm the treasurer at this point. And I wanted to thank Wally for speaking up. We do utilize the information that he pulled together on an ongoing basis. And as a matter of fact, the financial consultant, James Jordan, is utilizing that information also in his review. And I just want to encourage you, as Greta mentioned, to, if you would like to step forward with the Commission on Finance, it would be very helpful.
Thank you. Other comments or observations or questions about the financial recommendations? I'm just checking my hands up feature here, okay. Seeing none, we can certainly circle back. I'd like next to ask Stan to talk about the governance and collaboration recommendations.
Great, thank you. Those of you who have downloaded the report, either in hard copy or electronically, this nifty organization chart will be helpful to you in what I have to say. The governance-
Excuse me, would it be helpful to screen share the organizational chart now or as you speak or?
Sure. Can somebody put that up, throw that up? While that's happening, I'll just say the governance subcommittee worked long and hard to look at the different recommendations we were receiving, to review governance in the diocese, what was working well, what was not. Some of the changes we made were not based on what is not working, but more on a more tidy way to move forward. So another thing that people need to know is that at diocese and convention, there will be, the canons committee is currently working on the changes that need to be made to have a three-year trial period of this new structure. And our intent is that each year we'll look at what's working, what needs to be tweaked. So we're not, we're not, the intent is not that this is it forever, but this is our best work on how to move forward in a way that really benefits our diocese, creates new ways of economies, but also maintains vitality and mission will focus. So again, three-year structure will be asked to vote on canons that reflect that three-year trial period. So if you look at this, I'll just go left to right, the Board of Trustees remains virtually unchanged in terms of its, the people who are on it. I just need to pull something else up here, excuse me. So just quickly to Thrive's recommendations, these are designed to engage more leaders, especially leaders from across the diocese, with the focus on mission vitality, as I said. So there will be an expanded standing committee. Now that, people keep saying, what does that mean? It means that the current eight people, the current people on it will stay on it, but also we will have representatives from the four commissions on the standing committee as well. And those are the board, from the Board of Trustees, the Commission on Diocese and Organizations, the Commission on Ministry, Missional Vitality, and the Commission on Finance. So they will also meet periodically with the standing committee to enhance the flow of information from committee to committee, because what seemed fairly clear to us, both in the finance group and the governance group, is that communication was not as smooth as it should be across diocese and structures. So we've endeavored in every place here to put people in places where they can communicate to each other, not just informally, but as part of the structure. So that's, that's the standing committee. The Commission on Diocese and Organizations is the way of pulling together those entities that are part of our diocese, but also have their own structures operating. Those are Rock Point School, Rock Point Commons, the Brookhaven Treatment and Learning Center, and Mission Farm. And we're asking those people to meet together at least four times a year to share information, to figure out how they can collaborate, how they can engage each other in ways that are helpful to the diocese, but also to enable us to understand more what's happening financially in each of those entities, so that we being the diocese, so that we can be supportive to them and also understand better their, their financial structure. As I said earlier, the Commission on Missional Vitality is where there are sort of two arms. I think of it as left and right for no reason other than that's the way my brain works. The left arm is the Committee on Ministry, which will continue to serve as it has in the role of discerning, supporting people who are discerning holy orders, but also taking a more active role in the discernment of lay ministries. And that will remain as it is with the members that it has. We have two, we need a new clergy and a new layperson coming into that. You'll see all these things reflected on the survey, suggestions for nomination survey, if you open that. But on the other side of it is the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation. There's room there for six to eight people. And we really want these to be people who are, have a drive toward mission and ministry, who really want to serve the diocese in that way. This is where, as I said before, the juice is, I think. Sort of both things that we're already doing, like the anti-racism group and the creation group, but some also new initiatives. What are they and how will they work? Those two groups will not meet together every month, but they will come together periodically throughout the year with one of the chairs of the two sides. So Titus Pressler is Chair of Committee on Ministry, and there will be a Chair of the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation. They'll, they'll trade off leading the full group together. So that, that's a really important one, as you're filling out that survey, you'll notice there are lots of places for Commission on Finance and lots of places for the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation. You will all notice, if you haven't already, that there is not a diocese and council on this chart. The reason for that is not that they were doing a terrible job, but there was an original understanding that most of our mission districts were not functioning very well in an organized, cohesive manner. And the nominations for diocese and council were largely happening at the convention and kind of over lunch and kind of last minute. And we also know from our clergy that the mission districts, for the most part, with one or two exceptions, were not serving the need for them to have support in a kind of a cohesive group. And the same thing for laypeople. We have not looked at how to replace mission districts, that's something yet to come. And I actually would love to see that come out of the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation. Sort of what do we need for support and cohesion throughout the diocese in, I would call affinity groups or geographical areas. Then the fourth thing is the Commission on Finance, and that Greta has spoken to, so I won't go forth with more than that. I also know that Walter would like to speak to this, this area as well. So let's let Walter speak and then we can take questions.
Thank you, Archdeacon Stan. For those who don't know me, I'm canon Walter Brownridge, canon to the ordinary, canon for cultural transformation, which a lot of people ask me, what does that mean? And it actually means what the work of Thrive is doing. The bishop is really, Bishop and our president of Standing Committee, Lisa Ransom, have spoken eloquently about the challenge of the entire Episcopal Church and specifically about we in Vermont. And I know I'm on some thin ice, even though it's like 80 degrees in most of the state, as really relatively new, about 19 months here. But, you know, so I know that Vermont is a place of tradition. And it also can be a place of innovation. And the role of leaders and all of you who are on this Zoom call are leaders, I consider, is that we have to be, where, while some of these approaches we are talking about are technical, Dean Greta talked about a finance commission and putting that together. In this area of governance and collaboration, it's partly technical, but what is really important is that this is adaptive. And adaptive is harder to define, but what it really is, is the ability, not just to change a system, but to change a way of thinking, being, and doing. And that means doing church and being. And that's what I just wanted to briefly talk about. I find it interesting that because of maybe some conversations that people have read about Vermont, New Hampshire and Maine, that we immediately go to that, which again is technical. But the harder thing are the adaptive challenges and the need for adaptive leadership, which as the bishops said, we have to do first. I mean, I travel around the Episcopal Church and people are also, when are you going to do this with New Hampshire or Maine? And I said, that's not the question. The immediate questions are what is the diocese of Vermont going to do internally within ourselves? And that means, because we cannot, it's like, anyone who's been in business who worked in mergers and acquisitions, if when two entities come together and they are weak, you will actually kill both entities. So what we need to do is this adaptive work of changing, and that means resisting the urge to say, I don't want to do it that way because I've never had to do it that way before. The reality of it is, we, I, some of you know, I used to live and serve in South Africa. There was an expression, adapt or die. And that is really the case here. So that means for me, collaboration, it's much more collaboration is needed between White River Junction and Fairleigh, or Norwich, or somewhere else. We are excited that we've already got Virgin's and South Burlington sharing a newly ordained person. We've just called, also St. Peters in Bennington and St. James in Arlington have called a priest to share. These are not mergers, but there is this idea of sharing in what we call constellations, which we hope will get people to realize, we are not these isolated atomistic little places in various parts of Vermont. I'm happened to be in, I'm not in Burlington today this morning. Beautiful place to be where I'm at in Vermont, but we are actually part of a whole, which is the diocese. But the diocese is also you, where you are, connected to in a constellation with someone else who's in your same county or nearby. And that requires a different mindset. And so when we, you ask about collaborations, that's fine, but I think you need to first ask, where can we in my congregation collaborate elsewhere to help build God's beloved community where we are? And it's not just your own parish, it's in a wider context. That's all I just want to add.
That's a, that's a beautiful question for us all to hold. And you also introduced the mission vitality part of the Thrive report really beautifully. Lisa Ransom's going to speak to that in a moment. I just want to make sure there were, we entertained any questions.
Before, before Lisa did, I wanted to follow up on Canon Walter. I'm sorry, Wally said we should introduce ourselves, I didn't. I'm Stan or Standard Baker, Cathedral Deacon and Archdeacon for Diaconal Formation and a member of the Standing Committee and the Commission Committee on Ministry. I just wanted to say that we are not, we're not alone in this. And in the very best way, we are being watched by the rest of the Episcopal Church. At General Convention, I had people come up to me and say, tell us what you're doing in Vermont. It sounds like you're doing something exciting. So there are many, many, many dioceses across the larger church, the Episcopal Church, that are on some kind of financial hill or some kind of organizational hill. And they're looking to us and a few other places that are being innovative and watching and hoping and holding us up in that. So there's a kind of a positive edge to this in us being a beacon of hope and change for the rest of the Episcopal Church. So I just wanted to offer that as well.
Thank you. Bishop?
Okay, so I will, the other thing, thank you Stan for adding that. When I was at Kent University in Canterbury, I was having dinner with Phil at some place. And I don't know why the person interrupted. I was trying to leave, but anyway, so I don't even know where they're from, but they were vendors. And the woman stopped me and said, hey, thank you for the work that you're doing in Vermont. And we're really excited to see, you know, what you all do because it's really going to help the rest of the church. So I don't know who those people are. One had an accent that sounded like he might be British, the other, you know, she's from the United States somewhere. But yeah, people really actually are watching, which is, I don't know, not necessarily unnerving, but I think it's exciting because we're encouraging others as well. Sorry to add that little extra bit.
That's, that's a good story, Bishop Shannon. Dr. Good, I think you have a comment?
Yeah, I don't go by doctor anymore, but let me say that I'd like to hear more about whether there's going to be a council or whether it's dissolving, because it's always been the meeting of the convention between conventions is the role that that had. And that's where all the financial information went from all the supporting places, as well as convention itself receives financial reports from all the institutions that are of the diocese. So I'm a little confused why people didn't read those. So this Commission on diocese and institutions, the only two questions I have is it says something in there about submitting financial reports to a financial commission. Is that instead of to the convention or to the council? And the second is, is there a structural way that that's going to be determined, who's going to be president or leader or chair or whatever? Or is that something that group is going to self-determine?
I'm sure Stan can address that.
Wally, as usual, you're asking the right questions. Thank you. The diocese and council is not going to be reformed as it was. Part of its duties are going to the expanded standing committee and part of its duties are going to the Committee on Congregational Development and Formation. The financial reports will come through the Commission on Finance and be reported periodically to the- and be reported periodically to the enlarged Standing Committee. So the Standing Committee is is going to uh assume some of the canonical um uh duties of the Diocese and Council, and then then the uh sort of the oversight of mission and ministry is is going over to the Committee on uh Congregational Development and Formation. I'd I would invite Greta to respond to the flow of financial information if she would like. One of the reasons we're doing all this is to improve the flow of financial information, and it's one reason the Commission on Finance is so important. And while they let me add my voice to hope that you will join that group um with your expertise. So Greta, do you want to respond a little bit about the flow of financial information?
Sure, Stan, I'd be happy to to augment what you said. Um, the Diocese and Council will uh not be reformed and its duties have been um reassigned. Um, and just as a reminder, a council is not a canonically required body, but Standing Committee is. Um, and so the Standing Committee uh assumes its place as the um, the body that uh the bishop works most closely with in governing the diocese. Reports will continue. All of the same reports that went to convention will continue to go to convention. Convention doesn't change at all. Convention still uh votes on what it votes on and approves what it approves. The difference is that there is one entity, which is the Commission on Finance, which will assist the Standing Committee on getting hold of the entire financial picture of the diocese. So that ideally in the end, and this is probably a couple of years down the road, um, the Standing Committee will be receiving a consolidated financial report from the diocese and from the four other entities so that the Standing Committee can see in one report, the full financial picture of the diocese. Um, so that's sort of some of the shift in the communications uh uh train tracks is that um uh communication uh financial information will flow to the Commission on Finance and then from there to in a in an appropriately consolidated form to the Standing Committee for decision making with the bishop and then to the convention as it always has. So the reporting for all of these entities, reporting is sort of a two-way street, uh both down and up and then across. Well, maybe that's a three-way street. Um, so that we're all always on the same page about all the things. That's the end run goal. I hope that helps, Wally, clarify some things.
Yeah, that, that was a great explanation, Greta. And I just wanted to add that one of the things that um had concerned Sarah Cowan and the trustees is that we were working on the investments, but we never saw the budget. So we never saw how the investment funds contributed to the whole. And what was happening in the diocese is that the financial monitoring and the development of financial plans was happening in pieces. And the Finance Commission and now the expanded duties of the Standing Committee, as I understand it, will will fill in those gaps. There will finally be a whole perspective, which of course will greatly benefit the bishop and her office in being able to see the financial hole. Stan, you want to add to that?
Um, yes, and what was, oh, oh, I wanted to clarify this expanded Standing Committee in case people have not absorbed that yet. So the current structure will continue um with the um eight members um serving four-year terms. But the expanded group will be the chairs of those other commissions who will meet periodically with the Standing Committee in order to enhance communication. So just if you haven't gotten that, the Chair of Trustees, the Chair of the Commission on Diocese and Organizations, the Chair of the Commission on Missional Vitality, and the Chair of the Commission on Finance, and of course, the Bishop Ex officio and um perhaps some other ex officio people, but those, that is what we mean by the extent, Expanded Standing Committee. At least if you had any more comments about Standing Committee, please jump in.
Um, no, except that um, that as we um uh as we uh recruit and uh and request and imagine the new Standing Committee, of course, we have the new tasks ahead of us. And so um, the skill set of those who are on Standing Committee will match um very well with our new sort of expanded role that more aligns with our national canons.
And the the section on uh the Commission on Institutions is you're going to discuss that in more detail that the session that you have for that.
Yes, I mean, if anybody has a question about that new uh Committee on Institutions, we can certainly address it today as well.
Are we referring, are we referring to the Commission on Diocese and Organizations?
Yes, thank you.
I'm 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 making an effort from for myself to keep the nomenclature clear, because we've we've batted around several names over the last several months, so I'm I'm making a discipline of 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 making sure that it's clear and we're all talking about the same thing. So that's the Commission on Diocese and Organizations.
Yeah, and that was the question I asked is how is it going to be structured? Uh, is it they're going to self-determine their chair? Are they going to um, uh, have a common financial report or it all of that is, is that something that Commission will figure out?
Yes, and in short, and while again, another good question, I see that Walter wants to respond to that, so I won't say a lot. There are things within this new structure where we are asking those organizations when they begin their work, especially the new ones, to to first start out by defining who they are. In this, in this case, um, but uh naming a chair. And then um with help, I think, from the Commission on Finance, figuring out how they are going to report financial things. And Lisa, you'll be part of this too as Mission Farm, but and how they'll be talking to each other. So I'm just going to be quiet and let Walter.
I I'm going to um, with Greta and Paul here, um, be careful talking about financial things, but I, as Canon, I have been in conversations uh with James Jordan and associates who are doing our financial review and work and adminis- putting in a new system, both software, but also procedures. And um, I do want to just say a bit about that, Wally, that um, yeah, ultimately, what the bishop and the Standing Committee need and will have is a financial report that says these are the finances of the diocese. And then there are these other finances, inaccurate, truthful, transparent, these are the finances of every diocese and institution. And by that, uh, organization, as Stan wants to be clear, diocese is an organization. There are there, the the primary reason for that is with Mr. Jordan, who does a lot of work with all around the Episcopal Church. He has a book I highly recommend it called The Financial Organizations of Episcopal Parishes. Um, dioceses get into a lot of trouble. Um, frankly, with these organizations who are affiliated with the diocese, who ultimately the diocese is liable in every way. And yet we know the diocese don't know anything about it. And, you know, it it's most, and Tom Little can talk about this because chancellors talk about this a lot. It mostly happens with schools, but secondly, at conference centers and camps. And uh, you know, from lawsuits and everything else going on, it's difficult. So um, we're going to be able to do that with that. Um, I'm going to venture now slightly into Paul's thing. We hope, we hope down the road, particularly for parishes who struggle with their bookkeeping, where actually Mr. Jordan and I and Paul will eventually be going around and inviting treasurers and wardens and rector clergy, clergy, it'll be even mandatory. Um, to 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 learn about how to do your finances. But there are some of our smaller, very small places that really struggle with the financial reporting and requirements. And there may be, I'm not promising, but there may be this opportunity for us to step in as a diocese for that. And again, the bishop and the Standing Committee can then say, parish XYZ um, for whom we are, we actually know what's going on in that parish um and able to do that. So uh, there is, so there will be clear lines of reporting um that we're implementing what's called ACS Automatic Church Automated Church Systems, which will enable us eventually to do this.
Walter, thanks for that information. Um, I I'd like to move us on to missional vitality. It's so so important because actually all of the thinking about finances and and a more effective organization that communicates better are all in the service of mission. And Lisa, you were part of that group that was chaired by Luke Kruger, who unfortunately couldn't join us because of the death in the family. But I know you can speak to that group's inspiring work.
Yes, thank you. This is where I think it gets a little juicy and um exciting, and also it's a bit amorphous. I don't have charts or graphs to share. The tasks of this subcommittee um were to address vitality, which is, as Ellen just mentioned, the very heart of who we are as the church. And as I mentioned earlier, the issue of relevance um is uh was high on our list. And 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 just to be clear, this task of relevance isn't about how we reorganize to be a better version of our past. But it's about how we join the movement that Christ started 2,000 years ago. So that was sort of like the foundation of where um we began um talking and thinking and imagining what our church could be. We are defining vitality as energy and connection beyond ourselves. So no longer is it how many people are in your church on Sunday morning. Rather, it's what is the energy and connection that we hold beyond ourselves? And um, when we talked about mission, we're talking about what is calling, what is God calling the faith, this faith community to do? And of course, none of these are static and none of these are the same church to church, congregation to congregation, community to community. I love how Walter talked earlier about how we might be connecting two locations in a in a mission of vitality together that are across the state. They aren't necessarily in the same town or with with among the same people. And the diocese, of course, its role in all of that is it's the coordinating body. So yes, the structure and the finances are all very important. Um, but it's all to uphold this work of uh congregational and missional vitality. Um, so just very, I'll just get just the three um bullet bullet points I'd like to point out in our work was um the three characteristics of our Vermont church. Uh, we focused on simplicity, so really looking at the vital parts of our life and really looking closely at what is life-giving and what needs to be let go of. And the second was nurturing deep engagement. And when we talk about engagement, we're not talking about membership. We're talking about engagement with the community, engagement with one another, engagement with creation, engagement with God. And and actions, not belief or doctrine. So we're not um talking about what we believe or um, or what the doctrine is that we're, but actions, like what is that action that is connecting us to one another, to God, um, to creation, to ourselves. Um, and then the third is building and encouraging connections and collaboration. So as the diocese and all of this work we're doing in Thrive, it's how are we encouraging these connections and this adaptive um way of being church? Um, not from the top down, but within each congregation with each, within each community, creating these partnerships and this vitality, which will actually spark more vitality. So it's it 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 will grow. So I, those are the sort of the points that I'll leave with you. I know it's a little harder to talk about because there aren't graphs. Um, the only graphs there are are the declining church, and we don't want to look at those anymore. We really want to focus on what it is in each of our communities that God is calling us to do um outside of ourselves. I'm happy to get your questions.
Please said, Lisa, I'm I'm sure there are comments. Yes, Christine, mostly. You're on mute.
You think after all this time, I'd know. Um, I wonder if somehow our annual report will change to reflect this changing emphasis, because the the annual report is so, how many people are in the pew driven?
I think it um from the national church perspective, there is an effort to do that, whether or not that can happen. But at General Convention, there was certainly a lot of conversation about that, and that is my hope as well. Yeah.
Remember, say T E C and not national because we are an international organization.
Thank you. Thank you, Wally.
Earl, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, just one quick comment on the last comment, which is uh, there is uh within the parochial reports now, a lot more about the ministry the parishes are doing. Uh, and some, some of it also responds to the pandemic and that sort of thing, which I think will be very helpful. Uh, thi- this, though, is the area that I think I'm most concerned about because I'm a little worried there's kind of a disconnect. Um, there's the discernment uh work uh that is going on that uh, you know, has been called for by the diocese and all the parishes, except those that have gone through a transition in the past three years. So I I I've been here a little longer than that. So uh, we got a really robust discernment uh process going on at Good Shepherd, and it's really good. Uh, one of our members uh who's sort of co-chairing that Linda Webster is on this Zoom right now. And that's uh really, really good work for us, I think. Uh, at the same time, this happening in Thrive, I know that two things are both parallel and need to be connected. I'm a little worried, though, that they're a little disconnected. And I think it would really uh be to our advantage to look at doing this discernment work uh in our parishes uh and as robustly as we possibly can, taking that really deep look to where we are, where God is calling us to go, what, you know, uh, you know, some of the, what, what is it, the asset map stuff, you know, what, where, where our community is, where the uh opportunities for service are, uh, the deep engagement with our communities. And that's the kind of work that I think really is uh, you know, really exciting uh for us at Good Shepherd right now. But then to tie that more to what is happening uh at that level of the diocese as well. And I'm just a little afraid that because that discernment work hasn't been kind of under this banner of Thrive and Thrive seems to be a little disconnected from this discernment work, that we've got a disconnection there. So I really want to try to pull that in. Or I I'd like to see that being pulled in a little better, both, you know, from Good Shepherd's point of view. Uh, you know, I think we we'll we'll need to really look at that. And but I think it's really got to come through with this as well. It's a little hard when you got things changing kind of on two levels at the same time. And so that, you know, that, yeah, it's a a real caveat here that uh make sure that those connections that we want to make that are good and we're making them, but that those connections stay connected as well.
Good observation, Bishop. I know you want to uh respond and uh and Sherry, you're next.
Yes, so yes, thank you, Earl. Um, uh, Greta did make a good comment in the chat box that uh the Committee on Congregational Formation and Development. So, you know, the 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 three groups of Thrive, actually, you know, they they did have to collaborate with each other to arrive at the recommendations. And so um, you know, as Lisa described, it's sort of nebulous. It's hard to, okay. We can't say this is the program that's going to make us have missional vitality. Um, but there are things that we can do in our structures and governance to encourage that. Um, like, for example, with the Committee on Congregational Formation and Development. But also, um, as you said, you have embarked on discernment in your congregation, and everyone has been invited to that. Um, every congregation has been invited. And so, you know, I, this isn't necessarily a thrive thing, but I think that others that, you know, encourage your peers, encourage others that you know around the state to participate in this discernment. And it's, you know, it's hard for people sort of, I don't know if you want to call it post-COVID because it's not over. Um, but people say that they're tired, but I found that as we start discerning a a new future, that there's a a way to find new energy um to do the work and to be who we're called to be next. Um, but yes, you know, it it has to be um really intentional. And then also, some of this is showing up in the ways that we're doing um clergy and congregation. Um, uh, what do you call agreements between uh priests that are called to serve in congregations? So, you know, it's, it's, it's not just on two levels. It's all, you know, it's, it's a big, it's across all levels, really. So that's all I'll say.
Thank you, Bishop Sherry.
Thank you, uh, Sherry Osborne, uh, pretending I'm retired. Um, at least for the summer. Um, so it's just an observation because uh the vast majority of our time together this morning has been focused has been focused on that, the money stuff and the 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 structure stuff. And it is, it is part of the foundation of of what what we do. And yet, this whole other piece is the harder piece. It's harder to just talk about it. It's it's about change. It's about dreaming and attempting to dance with the Spirit. And so I just I throw that out because I don't think that I don't think it's any surprise, just in this small group of people. And so as we take this out further in future Zoom gatherings and into the parishes and beyond, just to, I guess, just to highlight that and maybe make some choices about what we speak of first, that it's mission first, and everything else is for that mission, to drive that forward, to dream that into being by the grace of God.
Thank you, Sherry. You're you're reminding me of a thought I had a little bit ago, which was that I should have invited Lisa to start with mission because everything else, as we said, is in the service of mission. Stan?
Thank you, Sherry, and thank you, all of you. I, as you know, am a deacon, and my prime passion is mission ministry, helping people. So it's always strange to me when God pulls me into things like Chair of the Governance Subcommittee. And yet, I've learned to listen to God and understand there's a reason I get drawn into some of these things. I believe if the car breaks down that's carrying the mission, the mission falters. And I really believe that what we're doing in governance and finance is creating, to expand that metaphor, a vehicle to carry mission and ministry. And if we hadn't jumped in to do this in the name of mission and ministry, there wouldn't have been a vehicle to carry it. So for me, this sort of in the in the trenches, nitty gritty, structure work is essential to who we are. And I'm in total agreement. Let's talk about mission and ministry first. But let's not forget that we need a vehicle that is working in order for us to continue God's work.
Wonderful. Stan, thank you. Carol?
Hold on. There we go. Thanks. Oh, sorry. I'm Carol Wageman. I'm a retired clergy, and I'm one of the co-chairs for the retired clergy in in our diocese. And that's where my question is coming from. I'm wondering, as I think about the number of bodies that will be needed to fill all these slots and and think outside the box and all very exciting. What I'm wondering is, will retired clergy be welcome into some of these leadership roles? If they have a skill set, if they're interested, and retired clergy might be enjoying their Mai Tai on the beach. But I find that there are still a a people still have a need for meaning, that their lives still mean something, and their ministry still means something, and serving God in ways. And it strikes me that a lot of the people who are going through retirement now have been in this deeper conversation for years. We've been a lot of conversation about how to go deeper in in ministry. And they come with experience, skills, energy, and time. So I'm just wondering how welcome they will be into those leadership positions.
I think you're getting the resounding yes. Stan?
Carol, you you Carol, you said something that was really important in that lovely thing you said. Many retired clergy will have the, I think, I'm going to paraphrase, the passion and the skills for this work. So my answer to you would be, we are welcoming anyone with the passion and the skill for particular jobs. And what this survey that I've talked about and put the, I could put the link in again if you like, is trying to find all of the people lay, ordained, retired, who have the skills and the passion for those specific things. So please, retired clergy, if you have the passion, the skill, and the time, make sure your name is being put in.
Wonderful. I have Linda Webster and then Michelle Thomas next. Linda? Be sure to unmute. There we go.
I get unmuted there. And thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you to Earl for his question and in support of our work on the Discernment Committee at Good Shepherd. I am the co-leader of that group. And both in reading the Thrive Report, but also just hearing the discussion this morning, to me, it raises my energy level for, you know, what we're doing and and really some excitement of, you know, hearing the sense of openness. I think that what I think it was Walter was talking about tradition versus, you know, really being able to look beyond and and have a broader perspective. And we've been doing that with some question of if we were going too far. We're trying to think outside the box. And so I think there's really, as I've listened, there's gems from all three, you know, sections of the report that have been highlighted in our discussion this morning as well that that really will help us on the congregation level, you know, feel like, okay, if we're we're moving in the right direction, it's okay. And that we have resources that we can turn to that are thinking in a similar, you know, fashion as we are and can, you know, provide that that support in the direction that, you know, we're thinking about. And I know that we, as we've been doing this, we've been making a list of questions for, you know, the diocese committee so that we can come back and say, this is kind of where we're going, and are we on track? So to know that there really are a lot of resources to help us with that, you know, is is just exciting. And and I wanted to, you know, reinforce that. So thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Michelle, you're next.
Can I also ask a functional question real quick?
Please go ahead.
Okay, so I know that this is being recorded. And as we looked as a group at the town halls coming up, we have a conflict on one night. So are these sessions that we're doing, the town hall sessions, going to be on the website for the diocese so that we can look at them at a, you know, another time?
I believe that they will be made available. Yes.
Okay, that's great, because we really want to be able to, you know, get the get the information, have that experience. So maybe I should just call in and find out how best to.
Yeah, so Rebecca Wilson answered the question better than I did. All the sessions will be on the website and published in the mountain, available through the mountain.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
It will be readily accessible. Thanks for your patience, Michelle.
That's great. Thank you.
Would you introduce yourself?
Hi, yeah, I'm Michelle Thomas from St. Andrews, Polsterer. And I have a, I guess, a question, comment, as far as like the Committee on Vitality or Missional Vitality. I was wondering about event, you know, evangelism or reaching out to the community at large as as a diocese. I know evangelism is sort of a dirty word in Episcopal Church, but I've been involved with Three Mountain Witness and and I, you know, involved with other church groups outside of the Episcopal Church and met many people who are in processing of deconstruction out of their own churches, whatever. And they, you know, are looking for the spiritual home that's safe or whatever. And I'm thinking, you know, and many of them have wound up in Episcopal Church. And so I'm thinking, you know, if there is a way to reach, you know, we have just this wonderful resource as a diocese, as a church, to, you know, be a safe space for people. And, you know, I was wondering, you know, if that's something that, you know, as a diocese, or, you know, is that something that has been thought of or looked at as?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Lisa to address that. And Richard, I see your hand up. And Earl, I think you have your hand up again, or did you forget? Okay. Lisa?
Uh, yeah. Well, Michelle, I guess I, to understand your question a little better, are you asking how we're reaching out in a more ecumenical way?
Yeah, we're just people who, you know, are church shopping, I guess you would say, or, you know, looking for a spiritual community.
Yeah, and I think that we're beginning to look at, see, see our demographics, not necessarily looking for a church, but looking for spiritual engagement and some ritual and some way to express what they feel in their lives. I mean, that's the real, that's really evangelism, right? Helping, recognizing God and the world around us. And so I think that the intention, certainly of the vitality group, is to really to really dig into that, you know, and to to become more aware of all of the ways that God is engaging us, God's indwelling spirit with us, right? So that that we can do that. And that's our hope for every congregation, but every and every person in every community. And so it's up to each person and each community to do that for themselves. And we need to figure out a way to support that as a diocese.
And I will add to that. So there have been, you know, like, the most recent thing offering through the diocese through Tri-Tank. And, you know, it's all about being connected to your community, which is, I mean, that is, you know, really how we do evangelism, is being connected to others and having opportunities to talk about our, you know, our life and our faith. And so as that will continue and also in a more concerted way and through congregational formation and, oh, I want to call it the right thing. Oh, the committee that deals with, okay, anyway, they came up with a name for it. But those opportunities will be there. It's not, we're not labeling it evangelism. And I think maybe it's a semantic thing, but really, when we're talking about, you know, looking at how we're contacting and being in in connection with our communities and people around us, that right there is evangelism. And we don't want to narrow it with that word because I I think it sort of stunts our efforts. Not that I'm against it or anything.
Yeah, it kind of has a dirty connotation.
And I'm not against the word, but I just think that people, you know, they they sort of make it mean just that you're going to talk to them about, do you have a personal relationship with Jesus?
Yeah.
And that's not it. That's not all of it.
Right.
Thank you both. Richard, would you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Rich Kramer. I'm a member of St. Paul's in White River Junction. I serve on the Finance Committee there. I've been listening this morning and trying to pay attention to the metaphors and the and the big picture and have a question to ask the Thrive Committee. So we've talked about getting out of the boat, and we've talked about climbing the hill. Those are both very nice metaphors. They they sort of imply different things, but nonetheless, they're there. And if I was asked to to put a metaphor on what Thrive has done, I would say it looks to me like organizational or governance governance reform primarily, because the missional part, as Lisa just said, is a little bit vague. And that's maybe what what we would expect. But what I'm wondering, if if people on Thrive could could talk about is whether you guys envisioned or talked about at the beginning, a Plan B or a Plan C or a Plan D that didn't make it. In other words, when you started, did you sort of think about, okay, we could do this option and this option and this option? But no, those first two options are really too, we we'd sink right to the bottom if we got out of the boat on that. Or or that option really wouldn't solve our problems. What so my, what ideas did you discard? What did you decide, we can't do that, so we're going to go in the way that we went of of climbing the hill? So were there were there conversations at the beginning about about things that you finally decided, no, that's a bad? So I want to hear about the bad ideas.
So I I can just, I just have a quick, immediate answer to that. You know, so often in the church and the history of our of our talking about vitality in our churches, and I don't even know if we would have used that language, we probably would have just said declining membership, right? We wouldn't have talked about vitality. We would have talked about, how do we get families in? How do we improve the website? How do we, you know, those sort of, like, we need a better coffee hour, you know, those sort of, we need to change the time of the of the Sunday service. We were pretty quick to immediately say, you know, that is not what we're talking about here. So from the perspective of the vitality and missional group, which is given a task that really, you don't have the charts and graphs. Again, it's it's it was really more of a discussion and a discernment. We, those those ideas were thrown out the window. It's not to say that a good website isn't important. It's not to say that having people gathering together on a Sunday morning isn't important. That's not what we're talking about.
And I don't know, do Greta or Stan or Anne want to?
I would just, in the Governance Subcommittee, we looked at a lot of things. Dump everything. Merge the dioceses right away. But and then we also looked at, how do we take all the structures we current, we currently have and just make them a little better? And we were sort of there for a while until somebody said, wait a minute. We are being called on to imagine and vision some new structures and new ways of communicating and talking. And let's really go there. Let's be a little bit more bold than simply, how do we make each thing function a bit better? So what you have, I think, is the result of that final conversation of what's working, what isn't working, and how do we make it work, and what structures do we need?
The same thing sort of happened on the finance perspective. We initially thought, oh, the ship is sinking. There's another metaphor for you, Richard, to stick in the book. And we just need to figure out quickly how to merge with, you know, Vermont and New Hampshire or make a deal. I mean, Maine and New Hampshire, or figure out how to how to cut our staffing, or figure out how to sell some property. And and we we realized that that was, there was nothing innovative or helpful about any of that. And so we went in a different direction was to, which was to sort of reimagine how we're doing, how we conduct finances in this place, and to reimagine a budget and to reimagine the use of the funds that we have. And so just like with Lisa and with Stan, once we let go of what is and started to imagine what could be, we ended up with this different thing that I, and I just want to take a moment to say how excited I am about this. And yes, we talked about finance and governance first, but the piece that excites me the most is the Commission on Missional Vitality and the work of the newly forming, I hope, newly forming come October, Committee on Congregational Development and Formation. That's where the meat of the diocese is going to be. That's where the work is going to happen. That's where the missional energy is going to come from. That's the place you're going to want to be. So if you have any excitement about doing that work, that's where you want to go, is that into that Commission on Missional Vitality and the Committee on Congregational Formation and Development. Because that's going to be the heart of the matter, pushing us forward as, you know, as evangelism for Jesus, as sharing the good news with everybody we meet, as thriving and growing parishes and dioceses. So I'm super excited about all of these changes that are coming down. And I hope that you can feel that excitement from the rest of us as well.
Thank you, Greta. Earl, did you want to make another comment?
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. This is the last one, I promise. I've used up my quota. But just this is, as Lisa said, this is the really juicy part of the of the conversation, which I really appreciate. And so I would suggest to both my dear sister Lisa, dear sister Kenneth, Susan, Oladell, that we might do a Thrive Town Hall that brings that we might do a Thrive Town Hall that brings together that discernment that the parishes are doing and within the aegis of Thrive and sort of look at that, because I think just based on, you know, the conversation for the past, you know, 10 or 15 minutes, this is really the, the important, the exciting, the engaging work. So, you know, I really, really appreciate this. And I'd like to see some further conversation, because I think this is the, you know, what God is really calling us to.
Terrific idea to have the congregation share. Wally, I see your hand up, and I'm going to go to Walter first and then to, and then back to you and anyone else who hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, Ellen. Very quickly. First, I love my brother Earl. I'm just gonna say this, Earl, Thrive's work is basically done. We have some mopping up to do, and we have two, three more town halls in September, the 7th, the 12th, the 24th. This goes to Diocese and Convention. Your idea of a town hall is good, but it ain't gonna be a Thrive, it's a diocese and Town Hall. If you got these ideas, you want to talk about evangelism, as I think Dean Greta, then you need to be on the Commisional Vitality, because evangelism is part of our mission. I happen, evangelism is not a dirty word. Donald Trump and the right wing, not stealing what my mama and daddy taught me about evangelism. That's what resigning Bishop Michael Curry says, we are, need to be evangelists for the Jesus movement. If you're interested in that, if you're interested in new communities doing church in a new way, step up, but it is not for this task force. They've done their work for the past year. And I commend Ellen, Anne, Greta, Scott, Stan, everyone that has been involved in it. Now, this is in your hands, diocese. It's in the convention, and then the work that needs to be done needs to be done by this Thrive. There's a, the task forces have a line under it. It is up to us as a diocese.
Thank you. And we should probably spend a few minutes on the very crucial next steps towards convention, but I wanted to recognize Wally again. Thank you for waiting. Wally, you're on mute.
There is a requirement for a cognitive disconnect between the liturgy that we speak on Sundays, the scriptures we read, and great efforts are made during sermons to say, oh, yeah, we got this great cognitive disconnect between what's stated here and what we believe God is calling us into. Is there a piece of this that has to do with liturgy and how it can be brought into the 21st century and let, leave away the 16th century and the first century and, and is that any part of what you're talking about?
Lisa, I'm gonna toss that one back to you.
Wow, that is a great question. I think I think it's a broader question than we could probably wrap our heads around in the next couple of minutes. But certainly, General Convention has opened up a few windows for that to happen in a broader way, so that we are sticking with our canons and that we don't completely lose our identity as the Episcopal Church, but that we're able to articulate things in a new way. And I look forward to doing more of that. Certainly myself here at Mission Farm, but also finding ways that we can forge the way in the Episcopal Church. So, good question.
Yeah, my question is, as a diocese, are we going to be able to do what you're doing at Mission Farm throughout the diocese? Is somebody going to drive that liturgy reformation effort? Because it's been pretty suppressed over the last period of time that I've been involved and.
Question for our bishop.
How about this? Wally, I have approved all kinds of, well, I, I said when I came here and, and walkabouts that I encourage liturgical experimentation. And the other thing about scripture is that sometimes it's a matter of throwing away the, the lens that we use to interpret what it is, because I'm always reminding people that Jesus was a revolutionary. Yes, he, he, he looked at his tradition, but he looked to it in a different way than people were at the time. And so I'm not at all about to throw out scripture or say that it is, you know, there, there are ways that it gets misinterpreted or narrowly interpreted. And, and likewise with our liturgies. On this past Sunday, I did a baptism in the river for children, immersion baptism. And I remember the first baptism that I did as a priest, and it was an immersion baptism, and I had the head of our, of our our sacristy, what do you call those people? I never did it myself. But anyway, our head sacristan was angry with me, and she says, you're not doing it the Episcopal way and that you're not a real Episcopalian if you think that immersion is the right way. And I said, well, I'm sorry, ma'am, but that is actually what it says in the prayer book. The candidate is immersed. And I don't know very many people that have seen an immersion baptism in a river, in a lake, or in, you know, a pool, in, in a building. And, and actually funny, you know, my first summer here, I did a baptism at Lake Elmore. And it was, it was around the same time as, as the one that I just did on Sunday. So, you know, our liturgies are not what people make them to be. We're the ones that make them so small and so puny and so, so clean and tidy. Baptism and the life of following Jesus is messy. And that's why I don't prefer sprinkling, pouring water, which is a second choice for a baptism. And we have so many liturgies available to us, but people, you know, it, you know, people don't want them because it stirs them out of their comfort zone. And really, that is what liturgy is supposed to do. It's supposed to transform us. It's supposed to equip us to really, to set the world on fire. And if that's what we're doing with them, I don't know, we need to think again. And that's, that's really what it's for. It is supposed to transform us so that we can transform the world, and it's there if we just make use of it. And it, it's okay to try some things, and although don't throw out Jesus and, and keep all his hard words, because they push us.
Thank you, Bishop. I love how this discussion has gone to the core of our spiritual lives together. Thank you so much. I'm, but, but I'm looking at people starting to drop off, and it's 11:40, and I thought, and I am so grateful for everybody's participation. I just want to make sure there's room for people who haven't spoken, who would like to. I'm not going to call on you, but I'm going to make space for you. I'm looking for hands up or someone to just unmute and say what's on your mind or in your heart.
Ellen, I'll just add my thanks to yours for everyone coming this morning and being so engaged and boosting this process along. I, I think it's just so exciting and so many different things can be done in so many different ways, and just seeing your faces here this morning is making me so happy. Thank you. Colleen? You're muted, but if you'd like.
Yes, was there a hand up? Thank you, Anne. Who would like to speak?
I just want to thank you all for doing this. This is so exciting. You don't know how exciting it's making me feel that. This is profound, and, and I know one of your Thrive people is going to do a report today, tomorrow at, after church, and I hope it gets, I hope it gets them as excited as it has me. Thank you.
Oh, that's wonderful to hear. Yes, Michael, would you introduce yourself? Michael, are you going to speak? Yep, I think you're not on mute anymore. Now you're on mute and we can't hear you. If you can unmute, please. All right, would you introduce yourself? For some reason, we're not hearing you, Michael.
Oh, he said audio isn't working.
Do you want to put your comment or question in the chat and we'll, we'll hear it that way? And while you're doing that, is there someone else who wanted to make a comment or ask a question? Yep, we'll wait for your, wait to hear from you, Michael. I'll just say while we're waiting that I, I would like to, before we adjourn, I would like to turn to Anne and Stan again to talk about, very briefly, about the next steps that are being taken towards convention, because one of the reasons we're doing these sessions is that people are informed before convention.
So.
Do you want to address that, Stan, while we're waiting?
No, I would love either you or Anne to address the next three town meetings and what they're going to focus on. That would be really helpful at this point.
I'm going to ask Anne to do that.
Great.
I apologize, I'm on a foreign system out here in Seattle in my son's office, but we designed this to have this open forum that's kind of general, and Stan will depend on you to to send the, here we go. To send, oh, I have the, I have the numbers here, to, I have the dates here in front of me now. So on September 7th, to talk more about the financial and organizational restructuring and how all the different components will talk to each other in the support of the mission. And again, always we want to talk about, you know, how is this going to be building a car that can drive the mission and carry the mission forward? But that September 7th, 5:00 PM session will be myself and Greta and Stan just answering questions as specific or general as people want to make them about this, the organizational pieces. And then on September 12th at 6:00 PM, Stan will lead a session with his broad nominating, pre-convention nominating committee to talk about who and how to fill these really important new roles going forward. And then September 24th, Tom Little and his Canons Committee will talk about building canons that will support this experimental structure over the three years period that we anticipate trying it out and evaluating pieces of it. So Tom's done a beautiful job of going through the the canons that we have of the diocese of Vermont, respecting and maintaining our relationship to and obligations under the TEC canons and constitution, but writing us some canons that will support this experimental structure. So complex work as always, and we're always grateful to Tom for his his incredible work in this, in this area. So those are the three coming up sessions that I hope you can all encourage your friends and colleagues to tune in for.
Thank you, Anne. And certainly, if you had any, you have any thoughts in between, come back to another session so that we can learn more from each other. Thanks so much. Lisa, you gave a beautiful answer to Michael in the chat. Was there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think, again, it's hard to define for every community what that engagement is that God is calling them to do. It's really a, a process of each community and each person really doing that discernment within themselves. The Thrive Report that came out in full, what gives a little bit more detail about sort of those guiding principles of simplicity and engagement and connection. And so I would encourage you to look at that, share that with your community. And I think Earl's idea of us meeting together to really talk about what those things are could be a really supportive and engaging thing. And when he talked about that, I thought that is diocese, that should be the whole of diocese and convention, right? I mean, we have all the work we have to get done, but as this conversation has arisen, we should, we should aim to do that as a, as a full diocese. So, thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. And with deep gratitude to everyone today, I'm going to ask our bishop to, for a closing prayer.
And before I pray, I'll say very quickly that, so plans for convention are well underway, and our time in person will be devoted to, you know, exploring and learning more about how to experiment in your communities and in your congregations, and also acknowledging this time apart that we've had because of the pandemic. So, you know, some of this sharing of ideas and things that people are doing will be happening and continue to happen. And so I hope that people will, you know, participate in those things. But anyway, I'm going to close us with the prayer that I started with, because, you know, and it is from our prayer book, but it's a prayer for mission. And that is really what all of this is about and why we're doing it anyway. For the mission of the church. Almighty God, you sent your Son, Jesus Christ, to reconcile the world to yourself. We praise and bless you for those whom you have sent in the power of the Spirit to preach the gospel to all nations. We thank you that in all parts of the earth, a community of love has been gathered together by their prayers and labors, and that in every place your servants call upon your name. But the kingdom and the power and the glory are yours forever. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you all.